When are they done with the others on the side?
Okay, we will call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed.
I have the shares this number of two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We got an HBA board meeting today, planning commission meeting tonight, Salt West management district meeting tomorrow, HBA general membership meeting Wednesday night. Colton extension meeting Thursday, chief's meeting Thursday. And then our Friday coffee.
Okay.
That's about it. Monday is holiday, right? Martin Luther King Day?
Yes, and you'll be gone anyway, so you don't care.
Nobody knows that.
Okay.
There's a Department of Economic Development Zoom industrial development site program this afternoon. City Hall, public hearing on fifty-four sixty-three.
Yeah, four to five.
Is that today or tomorrow?
That's today.
Today.
Four to five thirty.
Got it. SSM YMCA West has an opening on Thursday, an event out there. Friday, JC Board of Realtors, and Monday MLK Day. That's what I have.
Yep, I've got that. Thursday, there's traffic and safety, but I'm not going to be able to make the chief's meeting. Friday, yeah, the Women's Board of Realtors, and Monday is the NAACP MLK breakfast. So that's all I've got.
Did you guys get that? I forwarded it to you two?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Commission comments. Okay, bids and contracts. We're going to postpone the signing of contract with advanced correctional health until next week.
That is true.
Yes. So we will go to signing of Mo Health Net representation letter for the two thousand and twenty GEMT cost report. Chief?
We're up.
Yeah. We did the two thousand and nineteen last week, so this is
Yes.
the two thousand and twenty this week.
So this is just stating that we have provided Sarah Health Net with accurate documentation to the best of our knowledge. They have Myers &amp; Stofferson has completed the audit on the two thousand and twenty cost report. They did find that we are due an extra like sixty-five hundred dollars or something like that, but they have not issued their final ruling. So all this is saying is that we have nothing that would cause us to modify the data that we have turned in and that we are okay with their audit as provided to us. So just asking that you make a motion to sign the representation letter here so that we can continue moving forward in that process?
I'll make a motion that we sign the Mo Health Net representation letter for the two thousand and twenty GEMT cost report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of change order number one, Grand Point.
So this change order is for the final closeout documents for the Grand Point stormwater improvements. Primary reason for additional cost was an increase in the amount of fifteen-inch stormwater pipe and type-two rock ditch liner. Overall, this is an increase of one thousand and seventy dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the change order number one on the Grand Point project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of agreement for Professional Engineering Services Friendship Road box culvert improvements.
So this agreement is with Great River Engineering for a cost of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents, and this will provide the plan specifications for the Friendship Road box culvert improvements. This project will replace the box culvert on Friendship Road near the village of Wardsville. The existing culvert was constructed in nineteen fifty-five and is currently on MoDOT's poor condition list. And there are currently six bridges on, in Cole County listed on this, on the poor condition list, two located in the city of Jefferson, Tanner Bridge Road, which is scheduled to be replaced, M Street Road is scheduled to be removed, and Sterbridge Road is new to the list as of this past year.
Do you think I'll make some improvements to it? It seems like there's a lot of brush against caught up in that.
We'll take a look at all that.
I think it had a fire or something in it before, so.
Yeah, currently it's a double box, so whether we actually need to put a bridge in or oversize a double box, raise the road
Very good.
and all that, so.
Okay, that'll be it.
I'll make a motion to sign the agreement for Professional Engineering Services on the Friendship Road culvert project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Renewal two of Pest Management Services.
This is the second renewal with Mike's Pest Control Services for their pest management. We bid this out in two thousand and twenty, and they did a price schedule for up to three years. They have agreed to the year three pricing, and Greg is pleased with their services. Our recommendation is to renew for another year with Mike's Pest Control Services.
Make a motion to renew, renewal number two of the Pest Management Services agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Look at all these. Renewal one of EMS Fleet Maintenance and Repair Services.
This is the first renewal with Donnie Braun and Sons Auto Repair for the EMS Fleet Maintenance and Repair Services. They have no increase in cost, and Eric is pleased with their services. Our recommendation is to renew this contract another year with Donnie Braun and Sons Auto Repair.
I'll make a motion to renew the contract with Donnie Braun on the EMS Fleet Repair and Maintenance.
Second.
Okay. Little discussion, we had talked about doing some of our own maintenance. Does this preclude us?
So what we're going to talk about shortly would be the idea of the county beginning a central maintenance department. It would not affect this right here because this would be, impact the ambulance repair at a later date in this plan, so.
Okay.
So no for this year.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing for CNC Group Soul Source.
CNC Group provides service and maintenance on the Sheriff's Department HVAC controls. This is on an as-needed basis and will run for the two thousand and twenty-three year. It has already ran in the paper, and today I'm just needing approval and signing on the Soul Source. And Greg's okay with it.
I'll offer a motion to approve and sign the CNC Group Soul Source.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of Accurate Controls Soul Source.
Accurate Control provides security supplies for the Sheriff's Department. All those supplies must be compatible with their current system. This is on an as-needed basis and will run for the two thousand and twenty-three year. The Sheriff's Department is okay with it. The ads already ran in the paper, and today I'm just needing approval and signing on the Soul Source.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Accurate Controls Soul Source.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of Teleflex Soul Source.
Teleflex provides needles and power driver technology components to the EMS department that are only compatible option for their current equipment. This is a Soul, this is a Soul Source that is an as-needed basis and will run for the two thousand and twenty-three year. It's already ran in the paper, and today I'm just needing approval and signing of the Soul Source.
I'll offer a motion to approve and sign the Teleflex Soul Source.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the, we are going to postpone the approval and signing of the I Pro contract till next week, so.
Did we do Atkins?
No.
Oh, I missed Atkins.
Yes, okay.
Oh. Approval and sign of Henry M Atkins Soul Source.
Henry M Atkins provides programming and printing of the election ballots for the clerk's office. The system must be compatible with the current equipment at the clerk's office, and Steve was okay with it. The Soul Source has already ran in the paper, and I'm just needing approval of it today.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Henry M Atkins Soul Source.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I'll take care of all of those. Do we have any unfinished business? New business accounts payable review.
I ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve of accounts payable upon review.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
Okay. Discussion of central maintenance program.
So Tyler Clark, our, I'll scoot up just a little bit. Our mechanic crew supervisor is here to join us, and Matt Springer also has been part of this conversation as we've been developing the idea or the concept of the county going to central maintenance. So right now, our Public Works Department maintains some of our public works vehicles. This, as we've been talking, and I know with the County Commission, we've had some conversations here and there for several years, as well as with the Sheriff's Department and EMS about the possibility of doing this. So this is kind of a culmination of a lot of different ideas floating out there, and just the timing is pretty good right now. We've gotten our shop to the point that we're really doing some good work. We have really talented staff doing the work, and we're ready to take on additional responsibility. So how this could possibly work, and again, this is, this is just for discussion. There's no set in stone way that this has to go, but if, if it was decided to move forward with the concept or the idea of central maintenance, we would phase it in. Phase one could begin this year. Timing would be dependent on, you know, several different factors, of course, working with the other, the various departments that would be part of this to figure out exactly what the responsibility is going to be. But we would use our facility as it currently is. We wouldn't have to make any changes to it. We would use the current employees that we have. We wouldn't have to add employees, and we would add maintenance of all county vehicles and equipment except Sheriff and EMS. So this is Health Department, it's Springer, it's emergency management, facilities, maintenance.
Assessors, gavlon.
Assessors.
Public administrators, gavlon.
Yeah.
So, and then in addition to what we're doing right now with public work. So I think we had talked to Debbie earlier, it might be seventeen vehicles in that ballpark, and then whatever equipment goes with that. I know Nick Teetsort has some generators and some other things, emergency related. We would do the unit maintenance on that, which I think we did a little bit. We've helped him here and there.
We did before, yes.
And then we've also helped with Greg Camp and his, with his equipment here and there too. So some of it we've done intermittently, but we would take that on with this phase one approach. Phase two would be the same as what we would be doing under phase one, but we would add Sheriff and EMS. And so with that, we would have to add employees. We're just ballparking probably another two to three employees initially. That could grow, but, and how many employees we need would really be dependent on how this kind of plays out over the few years and how we feel we can absorb this in. It would probably be the addition of somebody that would focus on primarily oil changes, which is going to be a big component of it. Probably somebody specializing in ambulance repair and maintenance certified in that. So it would be more specialized and not so much just a general mechanic. They would be more specialized in certain areas. We would need to add on to the current building. I'm calling it Monticello one, the bigger building there, where we have the hoist that we added last year and poured concrete for a pad. We would add a building with a taller ceiling to allow a dump truck and other equipment to be fully raised up on the lift with the dump bed up. Right now, we can't fully lift it up. So we would need to add on that, plus we would just need the extra space. And then we would also do a wash bay on the Monticello two building, the one across the way. So we would do all that with phase two. And when this happens, I think it really kind of depends on how we're progressing with the new public works facility that we plan to work on and build within the next possibly five to ten years. That, of course, requires a funding source and making sure we have the funds to do it. But if we start now, we can plan this out and have a plan going forward over the next ten years on how this would look. So central maintenance phasing that in, adding Sheriff and EMS needs to be, or include a new, new public works facility for office and truck parking, which we've determined that was, that is going to be best upon the, where the old gas station was, the lot that we have there that we've been filling. Again, that would be up to six employees total with that, and all this, how that would look would be determined as we progress in phase one with Tyler and his crew, you know, as they, they can kind of build this department. One thing I didn't mention, one thing that they're very good at is specing and purchasing new equipment and vehicles. We could begin that with phase one, helping the other departments determine what to buy and how to go through that process. We can work with Jessica on that and kind of do the technical side of making sure we're getting what we need. And then phase three would be as we move out of our public works office and staff and everybody, as we move out of the Monticello one building up to a new building, we could add in a tire and alignment shop and make it really just kind of a one-stop shop for anything that we need, maintenance or just routine items. We could have that all in that facility. And like I said, it would require us being completely out of our current building for public works. That would be in the five to ten, ten-year range. Phase two, really, you know, we can, if we know for sure we're moving out, we have a date now, we're beginning construction, that's kind of when we would begin the phase two. We really need to have a known date for this new building before we can absorb too much into that site. We're already kind of cramped the way it is, and I think it'd just be a little too much to add the Sheriff and EMS unless we know for sure we're moving and we have a date determined and a plan to do it. So, and then, you know, how many employees we need in phase three, could be seven to eight. Again, that's really determined by how this progresses and how we can utilize our resources and just how it all plays out. Right now, the way the shop works, we're adding a lot of new tasks, rebuilding trucks, changing over beds, something we didn't do before. We used to ship all that out. We're doing that in-house. With getting new equipment, it doesn't take as much as repairs, so we're making some improvements there. But we're always busy, there are always things going on, but we can add in some of these extra tasks to kind of fill in, to kind of see how this is going to work going forward. So that, that would be the proposal. I know EMS chief and deputy captain Bullier is here to speak from what Sheriff and EMS might have or their thoughts on it, so. You guys got any comments or thoughts?
So I think the biggest thing that I want to say is, you know, this, this is a long-term plan. This no way reflects, you know, the satisfaction that we have with Donnie Braun's or any of the relationships that we have there. They do a great job for us. Obviously, there's advantages to moving to central maintenance. The one thing that I would urge is that we have to do this right. In order to do our maintenance, I would encourage somebody to be certified as an emergency vehicle technician. That's really kind of where our standards are and where we're trying to move to. And really, we do have enough maintenance work for a dedicated individual to just continuously work on ambulances. This isn't, you know, something where, where we can have one person, you know, just kind of doing the Sheriff's Department and our vehicles, you know, it's a constant flow. And with that specialty and with the EBT piece, we have to be willing to compensate these people accordingly. You know, this isn't just a shop mechanic that we can throw in and work on these ambulances. So as we move forward and plan, we need to be very diligent in making sure that we're hiring the right people with the right qualifications if we're going to go down this route. So I support the plan. I think in the long run, it will be beneficial to us, but we just need to take the time to do it right.
I know from the Sheriff's perspective, we mirror a lot of what Chief Hoy just said. I mean, we've been pretty blessed with the vendors that have come to bat for us, you know, with these bids and contracts for our vehicle maintenance over the last five or six years and even before that. So we have no issues as well with any of those or anything like that, but I think going forward, this is a good plan for us too. We have fifty-three, fifty-four vehicles in our fleet, so clearly it's going to be a pretty big thing, but I have no doubts they're going to be able to make a smooth transition. And I know Sheriff Wheeler couldn't be here this morning, but I know he's a big advocate of this, so. So it's really, it's continue the conversation, determine is this the right way to go and making sure we have the right staff and capabilities to do the work, especially when we get into the EMS side of things, ambulance side of things. Sheriff Cars, you got your, I mean, emergency-related items that are
Sure.
we need to make sure we take care of that too.
Sure.
It's definitely just a phased-in approach. That's why we can't just jump in all at once. We have to phase it in over, you know, the next several years and plan and make sure we do it right.
Yeah, Eric comes fashionably late.
Did you say my name too many times? I showed up.
No, we did. We just did. We have the fueling out at our shop, and it would stay where it currently is. We wouldn't move it up to our new facility. It just works good right there, especially if you're coming in for maintenance or, you know, even when we have the wash bay, you don't need to be getting all the tanks at the same time. They can just, when they're on site, they can wash their car or whatever, so there's some convenience.
How do we wash our ambulances?
Crews are doing it at their stations.
Okay. I was going to say, you can't get those into a rowboat wash.
Well, Jefferson.
I'm sure the crews would be happy about it.
Jefferson Street's got them big days.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we don't do automatic washes. Crews are washing their trucks every day in their apparatus.
They say they're always clean.
We have a truck wash bay big enough for a tandem max dump truck.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, that certainly could be, you know, if it was an automatic or, or, you know, automated system, I'm sure the crews would love that. As far as my perspective, it's part of their daily duties to pull the truck out and wash it. So, you know, not much of an advantage if it's just a spray-off type deal. If it was an automated thing, I'm sure they would use that to.
So it'd be like the fire department, they wash their.
And I'll just add, as far as, I don't know if this is even, MoDOT does this or not, but the increasing cost of our deductibles on any wrecked vehicles or anything that happens, I don't know if that's vision of any part of this or not, fixing little things that happen in fender benders or any of that kind of stuff, because that's only going to go up. Our deductibles keep going now, so if that's something that, I don't know.
It certainly could be part of the conversation. We've done bodywork.
Oh, yeah.
And actually, we're considering doing some bodywork on my county pickup truck that I drive, so.
What'd you hit?
Nothing. Just repairing rust and just doing some, I mean, they, like I said, we got some talented people working in our, hey.
Oh, I'm just looking at somebody's back.
Oh, they got to go there.
I don't know if MoDOT does any deductives.
I don't think they do, but to Debbie's point, we could definitely do the small things. Bigger collision-type stuff.
Right.
Yeah. But just little fender bender type things, replacing a fender, doing some, we can paint, we got to, we can shut up and we can spray and do all that.
Correct.
Yeah, we can, we can do just about anything.
Chief Hoy, how many vehicles would this central maintenance pick up from your area?
Probably approximately twenty, when you consider ambulances and the other command staff and utility vehicles that we have. One of the big things that I would put on the radar that would be beneficial to both of us is vehicle outfitting. So all of the lights, electronics, IT equipment that we have in our command vehicles or in patrol cars, that's something that we have kind of struggled with is finding timely, accurate work in that department. So that would be something that would be a big advantage as well to have that in house.
Definitely good conversation items that, as this thing progresses, would definitely be part of the mix as we go forward. So we'll have, they'll have access to the whole building when we move out and build our new, new shop, our new, new building, maintenance, maintenance department building. So there's, there's definitely capabilities on the other side. We're, it's basically just truck parking right now. We have five, five doors where we have plenty of room in there that we can add in some of these other items, so. Definitely great potential moving forward. Where it goes and how long it takes to get there is dependent on many different factors. You know, initially, you know, after maybe some conversation, further conversation on phase one, we feel we could begin that this year. It doesn't, it's not really going to affect the budget a whole lot. Cost-wise, you may save a little money with the other departments, but again, we'll have to build the other departments, so you're not going to see a major. If this is as you go forward into adding a lot more things into it, that's where you'll see some cost savings.
Ultimately, this, we're talking a hundred vehicles, plus or minus, right?
Figure all, yeah, easily.
At some point, being, being maintained by a central maintenance facility.
And is that what the city does over there on East Miller?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they have central maintenance at East Miller next to the bus barn.
Yeah.
And I don't know to what extent they can do things. I assume it's a, it's a full shop where they do everything.
Yeah, I do, I've been over there.
You've been over there?
Yeah.
We wouldn't be in this position if we didn't have a good mechanic crew and staff to be able to do the work as we're currently doing and getting us to the point where we could absorb, absorb some additional items with other departments. So just want to compliment them on where they've taken us the past, you know, several years and, you know, even more than more recent years, but we're definitely making great strides and feel we can add some more to benefit the county as a whole.
I think it would be stupid not to start off with phase one because that's.
Again, we've been talking about this for years, and if we have a long-term plan here, four to five years sounds like a long ways out, but it's really not, so I think we need to keep, keep talking about it. I don't care if it's every two months or something, let's see where we're at with it. If nothing's moved, I mean, so be it, but when we bought that old gas station, that was the intent was to put some, probably a wash station there and maybe somewhere maintenance. So I think your ideas have changed since then about locations and stuff, but, yeah. I think, I think in the long run, it'd be a savings for us and a benefit just because of convenience, so. And there'd still be specialty situations, you'll have to have Braun or whoever take care of stuff, and that's not a big deal, or if we're just overwhelmed with stuff. So, I mean, we are lucky to have Tyler and his crew here to do that. I've seen some of the work y'all have done, you made some trucks from Lemmons too. You should have sent that other car to them first, Sheriff's Department, Public Administrator would have been.
Yeah, that would have saved us a lot of money on the public administrator.
Yeah, in all seriousness, I think it, I think it's a good move to go towards it, so I think it's a good plan and, and keep working on it.
So we will going forward, kind of maybe lay, line out a little more what phase one would look like, and, you know, when we start, that might just be a further conversation, and we'll come back to you when we're ready to jump in.
I think it's a fine idea, and I'd suggest that perhaps as you get a little finer with the details, you, you have a goal as to where we ought to be at twelve-thirty-one of twenty-three. What, what's, what's the phase, I don't know if we'd call that phase one, but at least calendar year or fiscal year one, where do we want to be at December thirty-one and have some goals to reach?
Okay. That's fair. That's fair.
I have to fight Toby for money, too, it looks like, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
I was short of late, and I apologize. And the budget was approved, but do we do the five-cent surcharge to debt?
Yes, and I'd have to double-check. I think it's two cents this first year. We'll kind of see how that goes.
Okay.
But yeah, we did add that surcharge on the fuel.
For those who don't know what that means, it's two cents a gallon. Is that for the, for the gallon each picked up by various offices out there?
We were using pumps.
Yeah, okay.
It's not going to generate a whole lot of funds, but, you know, the idea is there's some responsibility that we have to the other departments to do all this and maintain it and everything, and to replace pumps and everything and maintenance on it, so it will help a little bit with that.
So do you call around on Monday mornings to find out what the cartel has set the gallon each price?
Yeah, he does.
Do you? Okay.
No, about every two weeks, usually.
He gets that sound of a church.
Any other questions? I apologize, I need to leave here real soon.
Sure you get all dressed up and then you...
Yeah.
I know, I know.
So my son Nathaniel's a Marine, and he's home, and...
Oh, congratulations on that.
... wants to introduce him on that.
Oh, that's super.
So we're going to go do that here at 10 o'clock, and I figured I better at least put some up there because he'll be in his room, so.
Notice you washed your hair, too.
First time all week. So thanks for the conversation, but...
Tell him thanks.
Yeah. He's doing well, he's out in Camp Lejeune and heading back on Friday, so.
Great.
Doing very good.
Very good. All right, thanks, Eric.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think we'll just keep the conversation going and work with the other departments, and we'll pick a start date for this.
Okay.
Come back to you all, you know, like you said, Harry, some goals where we want to be at the end of the year, and then kind of work through some of the other items.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Can you email me a list, all them vehicles for the Phase One?
I can get mine, just put the document here.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. And we're going, it's going to be a while with Sheila. Why don't we do the letter of authorization to Civic Plus for publishing mobile app to Google Play Store?
For our mobile app, the Google, Google has started requiring the government agencies provide written permission for them to publish our app to the Google Play Store, and that's what this document is, and I've already asked Jill to look at it. She says it's okay.
And this is under the umbrella of, of the GIS, is it?
The website.
The website, I'm sorry, okay, good.
My other hat.
Yes, okay.
Is our website good?
I'll make a motion to authorize Civic Plus for publishing the mobile app to the Google Play Store.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll get my HR paperwork.
Okay. Okay, then we have approval of 2023 handbook revision. Jeff went real quick to get his, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm pleased to finally get before the commission with the revision of the employee handbook for '23. There were very few changes. I've provided you all with a summary of the actual changes to the handbook. I could go through those if you wish, they are very minor. The, the big, big, big change was the alcohol, drug, and marijuana policy as it relates to Amendment Two and Amendment Three. I did a lot of back and forth on this and finally got Jill's blessings on revisions to the policy, because we don't want to stomp on anybody's rights that are bestowed by the Constitution of Missouri. However, we only do drug testing for safety-sensitive positions, and so safety-sensitive positions are provided for under federal grantee laws, and so anybody that is in a designated safety-sensitive position cannot use or possess or be under the influence of marijuana in the workplace. And so, of course, because marijuana will test positive, or people that use marijuana will test positive, sometimes long after the fact that they've used, then basically our policy is now going to prohibit them from using and being employed with the county. I know that's a difficult position for many people to accept. I do know that THC stays in the system longer for heavy people, so if I were smoking marijuana, I would test positive longer than somebody that's then. So it creates a bigger window of doubt and/or opportunity. We are not going to just randomly pick people out to try to find somebody that's using or to have an aha moment. So again, it is safety-sensitive positions only that we do pre-test, pre-employment testing for. They are subject to random testing policy, which we will continue to abide by, and then everybody in the county is subject to post-accident testing. And so if you are a holder of a prescribed marijuana, a medical marijuana card, we would require that that card be disclosed prior to any testing for post-accident, so that if someone were injured on the job and we require that they get tested, that they let us know before the testing location actually conducts the test, so that if we end up with a positive result, then we can handle it appropriately under the Constitution. So that is the big change of the handbook. There are some minor changes. The second big change was the commercial driver's license policy, because as of February of '22, there were changes to obtaining a CDL, and so our public works department has taken on the task of if they hire someone that requires a CDL and they don't have it, they assist with obtaining that CDL. And so since there's new federal requirements, then they're making that happen for people. We're not excluding people from being able to be hired with the county, so there are provisions in the handbook now for that. Other minor changes were made to the holiday policy, health and life insurance, bereavement leave, we added grandparents-in-law to the family members for which bereavement can be paid. Overtime and comp time, we had an issue earlier in the year where some people requested that their comp time be paid out. Balances were high, it was a liability for the county. So we've added the provision that comp time now can be paid out prior to termination at the commission's approval, elected officials' request, but that it would have to be done in full. We don't want to piecemeal these comp time balances if somebody has, you know, an issue come up. So that is a new provision this year for the handbook. Business travel expenses, in July, we upped the mileage rate to 55 cents per mile. That continued, and then shortly, recently, I believe in early December, discussion was held, and the per diem rate for meal reimbursement during travel was changed to $40 per day in-state travel, $46 per day in out-of-state travel. That's already been approved, but that change was made in the handbook. And then we've reiterated the post-accident drug testing for anybody involved in an accident. We reiterated it in the travel policy, because if anybody is involved in an accident, even without an injury, if it takes a vehicle out of service, law enforcement is involved or whatever, then post-accident testing is required in that case, too, even if there's no injury. Cell phone usage, we added that we stand by the prohibition for commercial drivers to use handheld devices while operating a commercial vehicle. We put a provision in there that if they were to get a citation or a ticket, that they would solely be responsible for those fines, because the use of handheld devices are prohibited under fair supervision on county business, whether in their own vehicle or county vehicle, that they should, of course, pull over, come to a stop, and then use their device so that we are just being more safe. So then there's, in the index, there were 15 new terms added to the index, and they are done so as to mirror the city and the state in common language. They're all very minor, nothing that changes the substance of any of our policies. So that is the sum total of all the changes to the handbook from the approved book in '22 to what I'm proposing in '23, and I would seek your all's input and ultimately your approval of the handbook.
Yeah, I looked at everything. So on the cell phone, can we not make that for all of our county vehicles rather than just...
Yeah, it's broad enough. It says employees are...
Okay, okay, because I'm, I'm like...
So whether it's their vehicle, county vehicle, whatever, it's, if they're using the phone while on duty, they should be pulling over and coming to a stop and certainly not texting or anything.
So like the assessor using our car?
Yes.
Vehicle or the public administrator?
Yeah, it's broad enough that it includes all employees.
Okay, that's...
Verifying public safety.
Yeah, you all, of course, would have to, have to use the law enforcement as well.
We are aware that the IRS increased the standard mileage allowance another three cents?
Yes, $2.65.
Just two weeks ago?
Yes.
And we've decided we're not making an adjustment again at this time?
Correct. We did have that discussion. We went and checked the state. They have not made any change now. They do theirs on a fiscal year, which would be July 1, which is when we changed it the last time, so we're going to monitor that and mirror them if they increase, if it's reasonable.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not really. I think you all answered all the questions I had before. I know on the overtime and comp time, is that any time during the year, or is there a certain time that you want that done? I know it was just a, it's kind of a headache doing partial, paying out partial, so that's why we wanted a policy.
And that it's all balances, but of course, naturally, under law, any comp time balances, whether they're large or small, are paid out in their entirety at termination. So comp time never goes away.
Termination or retirement?
Right, but this would be, create a provision for you all to say, yeah, we want to pay out a comp time balance. We would just ask that it not be partial balances, that someone didn't come and say, I want to buy five hours of comp time or whatever to pay a bill or whatever. That creates a huge headache in record-keeping and in payroll, because it opens us up to more errors.
There's not a certain time that they need to do it. I mean, if you want to see how much you have at the end of the year, and you didn't use a bunch of time during deer season or whatever, and you want to check out all of it for your Christmas shopping, then you can do it then, or you can do it in...
If you all approve that.
July for your vacation or whatever.
Yeah, of course, we would, we would prefer that it stay in there or not accrue, one of the two, because the in or out does create a little bit of a headache. But comp time never goes away. It is a liability for the county if it's carried on the books, but any employee that accrues comp time, they do get that time. It never goes away. We don't wipe that out.
No, that's fine, paying them out, I just, we need to have some kind of policy, how we even want to do it, so that either the elected official or the director needs to make the request, and it's come from them, correct?
Correct. That would be our, our ask.
Okay. And I think just one of the concerns about what the medicinal marijuana and stuff in Amendment Three and all that coming up is that, I mean, that stays in your system, but if you come to work and you have an accident, I think that was my problem, so we have work comp or any kind of other liabilities, but if something does happen, you are in some kind of an accident, you will be tested, and we do have things that do protect us if you are positive, so that it just kind of helps us with our liability.
Correct. And being federal grantees, we are required to abide by the zero-tolerance policy, except in very rare instances. And so again, I got Jill's blessing on the policy. It is lengthy. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer questions. Jill can certainly help me on that end, and we want to do what we can to do everybody fairly, but again, mitigate our risk and abide by the requirements of federal law for grantees. We get money from the federal government, and more than one instance, we don't want to...
Yep.
At the risk of asking a silly or dumb question, because of these changes, do all employees need to re-sign?
Yes. Once it has your blessing, then I will print and bind copies for each of the department like I did last year, so that they have a desk copy, basically. It will be put on the website once it's approved by you all, and then all employees, once the hardbound copies are passed out to the departments, then each employee will be responsible for reviewing it and again, signing off that they've received it, understand it, and acknowledge that they got it or had access to it.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a sample handbook acknowledgement in the back of the handbook...
Yes.
But I'll get individual ones to the department, so they don't have to tear their handbook apart, so it can stay intact.
Can they sign it online?
We don't have that capability yet. We can work on that, but right now, it is a paper copy that goes in their file. I'm a little iffy on, I know electronic signatures are allowed all over the place now. I'm still old-school, and I want a piece of paper that I can touch and refer to or that multiple people could get hold of, so I will always be an advocate for having paper copies until I'm forced to go otherwise.
We're going to scan and make a copy of it? We won't even have a paper, paper copy of anyway?
Well, we, right now, we are keeping a paper copy. I mean, physical paper copy.
That's why we have 40,000 file boxes.
That is why we have 40,000, but...
Well, we need to get into the, at least into the 1900s at this point.
Well, if they term, then it's...
Yeah. Debbie and I are both advocates for paper, so...
Let's hold on just for 50 years and those boxes and roll folders.
Nobody stays 50 years.
Jeff, Mike.
I just, get rid of the paper.
It's a valid point, Joe, but...
It is.
We deal with this, we've got a bunch of them still sitting in emergency services building, probably still some up in the top of the courthouse.
No, absolutely.
As long as we've got good backup...
Everything.
With Hoover.
I didn't say of yours, of anybody's.
Mine.
This antiquated system we have of storing stuff.
We need to be backed up.
More paper and spiders and stuff. Okay, both are in. Thank you.
I'll pick up where you left off. Should there be a witness to the signature?
It's not on the handbook acknowledgement right now, but I would hope that the elected officials and department heads are actually taking part in that interaction to make sure that it is being, of course, if there was ever a question and Debbie or anybody else came up and said, that's not my signature, we would compare it to other documents in their personnel file that they have signed previously, and make sure that Johnny's not signing for Bob or whatever the case may be.
Maybe you could shortcut that question if there was a witness line on here when the...
We could.
Might suggest that, and let's see, was there something else?
Isn't there a way to set this up in a PDF format that you have to electronically sign it through your email?
Well, we, we're, we're not going there yet. Yes, there is, but...
We have a lot of variety of employees here, so...
And not everybody has access to email right now, so...
Right.
But yeah, we are working towards that, hopefully.
I'm not saying everybody, I'm just saying for people that want to do it that way. I mean, like me, I'm like, give me something on here, I don't have to have a paper on my desk, so.
I think that was, okay, that was my main question was, when the employee signs, should there be somebody in the personnel office or someone else have witnessed the signature? Just a shortcut that issued potentially at a later date.
Sure, absolutely, that's an easy thing.
Okay.
May I have your blessings?
For the blessing, this was a big job this year.
It is a big job. Even with minor changes, it's a big job.
Well, I think the recreational marijuana just kind of ran you in circular orbit for a while, and understandably so, so thank you for all the hard work that went into this thing. It's, it's a big deal, really is, so.
It is a big deal. Definitely, she's worked hard on it, and it's, it's a comfort to know that we have this, and it's updated, and we can give her outside out there an updated version, we can give to our employees, we can ask them to refer to it, you know, and they do sign off on it, and employees do, too, on a lot of paperwork, so we just always encourage them to, this is important to you as an employee, so.
Do elected officials sign it?
They, some did last year, many did.
We should.
It's just as a reinforcement that they're...
Yeah, I agree, we should. Someone could push back and say, it's not part of...
I had two that pushed back.
I took an oath, yeah. You did? Okay. But having said all of that, I will make a motion to adopt the revised 1.1 2023 version of the Cole County, Missouri Employee Handbook.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good work. Okay. Gosh, we're, we're, it looks like... Gosh, we're, we're, it looks like we're down to the bottom. Is there anything else?
Since we were talking about vehicles before, I might just bring this up since both parties are here, but I know last week I had the title to you guys to sign from juvenile to get this vehicle out of the parking lot. I forgot to mention that maybe they're still going to need a vehicle at some point, but I also had another department address that they're ready to get rid of a vehicle, so maybe they can talk about that and that would be EMS and it was a 2010 Explorer, so I don't know if that's an option you'd be willing to move or if you guys want me to get the title and we purple waved it to.
Well, before we dispose of a vehicle, I think the assessor's office has shown some interest in another vehicle, so before we dispose of one, I think we have to shop it in, within the family.
How, how bad is our 2010 Explorer?
It's, from a mechanical standpoint, it's been maintained, it, it's not bad and we're going to get it detailed before we do anything with it, so interior, it will have a little bit of wear and tear, but it's not in bad condition.
Gee, not many miles, though.
95,000 miles.
What kind of interior?
Just a, it's an SS, I don't even think it's an SSV, I think it's a...
Fabric?
Yeah, it's fabric. So, it's the, the last year of a very small Explorer, it's not, you know, what we're currently thinking of. I don't think it would be ripe for a key or anything like that. It's probably a utility vehicle and that's...
Is it four-wheel drive or...
It's all-wheel drive.
All-wheel drive.
So, I mean, I'd just treat it like we do our other surplus stuff and let Jessica email her by and say, we've got this, anybody in-house need it in your department, we'll, we can figure it out then.
Do you want to put a price on it from one side to another? I know there was discussion about that at one time. Obviously, this particular one was bought with, he had that sales tax money, so, so we could put a price on it, put it out there. I mean, it's, it's up to you guys.
Well, I think we, there, there would be at least a journal entry.
Yes.
That, that shows the, the department that's giving it up is reimbursed for some kind of value and the department that's acquiring it has to pay for that value.
That is a 13-year-old vehicle, but 95,000 miles for a 13-year-old vehicle is really not...
I mean, it's been maintained, so...
It's almost old enough for Sam to be interested in one of, one more.
It's not...
Ooh, can I keep a light bar and everything and a siren? Does it have a siren?
Yes.
Well, I would have just to reach out to the departments first.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? I received a letter from Missouri Department of Natural Resources, public awareness session, proposed Jefferson City landfill expansion, Cole County. Dear Commissioner Bushman, the DNR Waste Management Program will hold a public awareness session as required by revised statutes of Missouri. On the proposed Jefferson City landfill expansion, this will be 5:30 PM Wednesday, February 8 in the department's East Elm Street Conference Center, 17:30, East Elm Street, Jefferson City. So, anyway, anybody wants to... And, you know, strange thing is, I had a citizen contact me Sunday and he hadn't been picked up in three weeks, so I ended up going to our public services and wherever their corporate office is, but I think we have it rectified. It was actually in Jeff's, but I, I took care of it. You're welcome. Anything else?
I didn't even know about it.
Now I know. I am. I am.
Just trying to shove it on Ted.
Shove your trash all...
No, I took, I took, hopefully it's all taken care of. I, I'm going to get back with our citizen here, so that's all I had.
Yeah, they're using good to work with.
Yeah. Okay, I need, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I make a motion pursuant to section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following, real estate under section 610.021 subsection 2.
Second.
Roll call.
Sam.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.